Hi, it's well, I'm Nana. Good evening. Welcome. It's good to see you all. Welcome to the Business Committee Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. It is with great respect and humility that we acknowledge and honor the lands of the Tsinamuk people. The Tsinamuk people maintain their profound, unique, and spiritual connection to the land through ages traditions, teachings, stewardships, and expressions of reciprocity. I'd like to acknowledge that some of us are also coming to you from the lands of the Tsinamus or the Tsinawas people, and we welcome you as well. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in order to the agenda? If you could just type it in the chat? Seeing none, I will seek a motion that the agenda be approved. Tim? Seconded by Greg. Anyone opposed? Okay, we are approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes, that the minutes of the Business Committee Meeting held September 11th, 2024 be approved. Thank you, Chantel, seconded by Greg. Anyone opposed to the approval of the minutes? Okay, minutes are approved. Moving on, we have no presentations this evening, so we'll move into Senior Staff Reports. 8.1, Zayed Merchant, the Director of Information and Technology, and Mark Walsh, the Secretary Treasurer, will be talking to us about confronting today's real challenges of cybersecurity risk. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, and thank you very much for having this item on the agenda this evening. We thought that it was very timely, and I've been talking about bringing a report on cybersecurity to the board for some time. I just want to briefly highlight a couple of, you know, the good news and a couple of bit of, a little bit of challenges, and things to expect. Then Zayed might add a few things, and then we're happy to answer questions. It's a relatively lengthy report. I hope everyone had a chance to read it, but it's there for the future if you need it as well. So we, as a district, are, like other districts in the education sector, more broadly facing some serious cybersecurity issues, particularly given the sensitivity and kind of depth of our, the personal information that we collect and have on hand, including the, you know, increasing use of technology to do that. So in order to combat cybersecurity, though, our IT department is proactive in that regard and is taking some steps that are outlined in the report. We, as a district, are not, though, without threat, and we certainly have some things that we need to do, including move to creating a cybersecurity plan. Generally, we're good on the privacy front in the way that we would respond to breaches example, but cybersecurity, again, more broadly, has things that we have some steps to take. Some low-hanging fruit, so to speak, are out there with respect to education of our staff particularly, as well as, I will tell you right now, the biggest complaint you'll probably hear coming from IT this year, and so this is one of the reasons to bring this report to the board, is multi-factor authentication. So, you know, when you want to get into your DoorDash account even probably nowadays, they, you have to sign in via your email, and then you get a text or you get some other kind of form of confirmation. That is coming to SD68 as a very baseline security measure, and so we'll be communicating that. We'll be helping people through that, but it's unfortunately, again, becoming relatively baseline. So, yeah, I want to recognize Zayed and his team for being very proactive, and I'll maybe ask him to add a couple of comments about where we're at and what we're doing next, and then throw it over for questions. Zayed, you're ready, or is ironically your technology not working? Okay.
No, I'm okay. Thank you through the chair. So thanks, Mark and the board for allowing us to bring this to your attention. Cybersecurity is not a new area for us in IT. It's just been in the IT realm for many, many, many years, and and it wasn't too long ago when not many people outside of IT were talking much about cybersecurity and the threats that we're facing, and the reality is, though, that it's confronting all of us, and we are ready and able to take more aggressive action against this threat and actually have a duty to do that. And so this was the, one of the first steps to just try and get this matter in a formal way into the attention of people outside of IT and to hopefully recognize or have people recognize that this is something that's everyone's responsibility and not just a matter for IT and IT professionals to actually endure and take responsibility over. But fortunately and unfortunately, everyone is facing this threat and dealing with it in their day-to-day lives. We want to take steps to make sure that we're learning from, I guess, other misfortune of others, and hopefully, as long as possible, let's stay away from victim status. So thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions now or later, feel free. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Is there anyone that has any questions? Tim, I see you have it. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just trying to find the hands up. It's not on this one. Oh. Thanks. Thanks, Ziad, for chairing. Obviously, I appreciate the report on this. I'm just wondering about, I guess, just a comment. Recently, the First Nations Health Authority was just breached as well. So we're good. Everybody's sort of, it's been hit. It's sort of hit many people. What they're making us do is sign into an Equifax sort of thing, having something to do with their credit and all this kind of stuff, right? So, but I find it interesting, like, just around cybering and the breaches and all that stuff, right? Because if you see, if you remember the old phone books back in the day, our addresses used to be sitting in those, in phone books, right? So what other, I guess, question is, what other information are they gathering that, you know, is it date of birth, or what is it that we would be impacted by the most when it comes to protecting ourselves, right? But also, I'm just glad that there's measurements going on around being proactive and prevention as well around the district. So just a comment. Thanks.
Sure, and perhaps I can, I can respond to that, Chair, and thank you, Trustee Harris. So there's two aspects that really, one is the operational aspect. So they break into your system and they lock it, and then you can't do anything. So we're not on teams. We're not paying people their wages. They, we are just locked out of our own kind of system. So leave the personal information problem aside, just there's an operational impact potentially. And so that we need just from a functionality perspective. You can just think of how much function is a district we use electronically. On the privacy side, though, that we have medical information. We have, you know, educational psychiatric, you know, that type of information theoretically stored. Obviously, we do a very good job of ensuring levels of security that are aligned with the level of information. So again, to your point, if it's somebody's, just their name, is that big a deal? It's, you know, we're going to be sensitive to it, but it's not going to have the same level of security as some of those more sensitive documents. But we have an HR system, and we have information about our employees, which we also need to maintain in a confidential fashion as well. So there's some of that, that type of thing that, from an informational perspective, but it is both protecting our information, as is our obligation, but also protecting our operations that we're doubly worried about at the same time.
Thanks, Mark. Tanya, you have a question?
Yes, I was just thinking. I didn't think I had a question, and I remembered. Two-factor authentic, I can't say the word tonight, authentic, you know what I mean, the two-factor thing. Sorry. Is it going to be, have you guys thought about whether, are we all going to be required to do it the same way, or can we choose? Like, for example, when I got my phone, I tried the fingerprint thing, and I regretted it because I could never, the next time, get my hand on it exactly the right way and get it to read my fingerprint properly.
So I'm going to let, I'm going to let Zayed, because we've been, we've been in disagreement about the convenience of this particular topic for a bit, but it's coming. So maybe I could get Zayed to speak to that.
Well, I, the multi-factor really is really that. There are many factors that we can choose from. The most common one that you are familiar with probably is the text, right, that you get as a second prompt, right? So they call that second factor verification or 2SV. But there are weaknesses in that as well, because the bad guys also have a unique ability to fake and spoof cellphone numbers, convincing people to to answer a text that actually is coming from an illegitimate source. It's now widely known that SMS texts are actually a weakness as well. There are modern ways to do second factor. Everyone today has a phone, sometimes two or three phones. There are some modern apps that are today quite secure and used well to provide a second factor authentication. Really, you know, in the old days, and I'm just going to highlight the importance of second factor authentication. In the old days, your firewall and your internet strength was really what was protecting you. Today, your firewall is your people, you know, the actual username and password that they use, and that's what, that's what's targeted most frequently. So we'll have various types of multi-factor authentication options available that make the most sense for the most number of people in various situations, and we also want to balance that with convenience and usability. You know, the most secure system is one that's turned off and unusable. We have to find a way to make our operations continue and actually work and do it in a safe manner. It's always going to be a risk, but we want to make sure we reduce the risk and maximize operational efficiency. I don't have an exact question for you which factor, but it'll most likely be the one on your phone with a special authentication app freely available will probably be the one that's most favored by staff.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up, Tanya?
Well, and actually, what I, not such a pop, it's just clarification. I guess what I meant by bringing it up in terms of using your fingerprint, for example, is, like, right now, I have an issue with my thumb. Well, I have an issue with my thumb where it actually hurts to put it in the position. It's arthritis thing. So I hope that we're considering accessibility factors when we're choosing the, how we do it.
Yeah, and perhaps, Chair, I can respond to, yes. So Mr. Merchant and I are discussing that, but also, yes, so the accessibility, also convenience, to his point, is we can't be scaring, making the access to our systems not there for everyone. So it's not here yet, and other districts are already doing this, and so we're having going on there as well to see the hiccups that they have, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chantel?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair, thank you, Zayed, for bringing this forward. It's been on a lot of our minds for a bit now. Me and Tanya actually went to the Canadian School Board Association this summer, and we got to hear about generative AI and the pros. One presentation was about the pros, and the other one was about the cons and what boards really need to understand and prepare for. So it's something that the board is, we're definitely going to be starting to look at. I'm going to be bringing forward to look at policy, to look at making sure that we have some of those systems in place at that level. And it's interesting to note, too, that we, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn or not, but at our Vancouver Island School Trustees Association conference that we had this past weekend, maybe Tanya can tell me if I'm speaking out of turn or not, but we had talked about a board was thinking about bringing forward a motion to advocate for more funding for cybersecurity for our school districts, and somebody else noted that there has been perhaps some discussion that there might be something out there coming, but we don't know. So definitely, if the government doesn't look at it, we're all going to be looking at it as well to look, make sure that the funding is there, because this could cost a lot of money, especially when you have been the victim. It could really drain the coffers pretty darn fast. So I'm really, really thankful for you bringing this forward. Oh, for the information of the chat, Microsoft doesn't think it's super accessible. Yeah, yeah, I have to use it for other parts of my life as well, and it's not too bad. I just do wonder about the students who don't have the cellphones, and I think you're all going to figure that out, so that's going to be fantastic. I am wondering, I do have a question here at this long-winded beginning here. So, and this is maybe more an education committee kind of question, but I'm wondering what kind of what we're sort of doing at the classroom level. Do we have any kind of like resources online that we can offer for teachers or whatever? I don't know. Maybe that's part of the plan. I'm not quite sure. I'm just kind of wondering, is it going to kind of trickle down to the students? Are we going to have anything there yet? Or are we kind of looking towards that area? I'm not sure if you can answer this question or not. It's okay. But I'm curious. That's kind of where my brain went to was, like, how are we getting it down right to that level?
Yeah, and so through you, Chair, I can answer that we're not contemplating the student level in any serious fashion at this point, because the cybersecurity risks that we have are with the adults that have the access to the more sensitive information. And so and so I would suggest that the kind of digital literacy slash privacy slash security for students issue is a kind of educative, is an education committee type of topic.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right, Leanna?
Hi. So have we never had a cybersecurity plan? Like, is that, this would be a brand-new, a brand-new concept?
So I can answer that we haven't had a formal cybersecurity plan, but stressing that cybersecurity planning and implementation and improvements have been a part of our operating mode for years. And so what we're doing is we're emphasizing the need for a cybersecurity plan that is formalized, has a roadmap, and has sign-off and broad support from every level of the school district.
Okay, that makes sense. And I also really appreciated the, like, training and awareness campaign. I think that's really key, because it's so easy to just be like, oh, we'll just leave that for IT, and that's just not the case. Like, every single person is responsible for their part. And one thing that I found surprising was that there's 15,000 devices, like, that's almost the same as students. So I was a little bit like, oh, I mean, it makes sense, but that was kind of a jarring number. And then also, that 7,000 are online every day. So, or like, are accessing Wi-Fi. So is, like, the cybersecurity, I don't know a lot about this, is it completely different in the Wi-Fi world than it is in, like, the 15,000 devices?
Yes, every aspect of technology use comes with its own cybersecurity, you know, impacts and ways to mitigate risk. You know, we can't, there's no cookie cutter answer and methodology of addressing cybersecurity that applies to every single technology. So it's multi-layered, it's multi-pronged. A lot of it is the technology and how strong and resilient we build our tech, the actual technology. But a big piece today is really educating people on how, what the risks are and how to use it safely, because that today is really the weakest link. You know, we we want people to understand why we put so much emphasis on locking information down for people who shouldn't have access to it, putting in passwords when it's an inconvenience, you know, putting in multi-factor authentication when it really always seems like a barrier. But I think the more people understand reasons behind these things, the better, you know, the more safe we are, right? But and just to specifically speak to the Wi-Fi, so Wi-Fi is really wireless access for mobile devices. The 7,000 daily connections I refer to in the report are really about the BYOD devices that students and staff bring from home and connect to our devices. We put a different layer of security on those devices to make sure they're not accessing internal protected, you know, resources easily, right? That they're, they really just want internet access, which comes with, by the way, a lot of firewalling and filtering and malicious software filtering as well. So it's not, it's not a free-for-all.
And the one thing that I, an anecdotal example, too, is, for instance, when I asked for access to a file of some sort or access to be able to access files, I have to give a reason, too. So, you know, I'm senior level of the organization, and, you know, theoretically, I can get access to the communications department's files, but if there's no need for that kind of sharing, then, you know, the nice-to-have is is not the rule. The need-to-have is the particular rule. And the one other thing, and it's slightly ajar from, or away from cybersecurity only, is Zayed and I have been discussing, given the diversity of challenges in IT and the devices and of the things we need to specialize in, how can we, as a district and a department, you know, provide more specialized services with the resources that we currently have, because it is getting so diverse and challenging? We don't have quite a solution yet, but we'll probably come back to the board in time with a bit of a review of of how our structure serves our schools to make sure that it's aligned properly, because it's been a little while. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I see Greg has a question as well.
Yes, thank you through you, Chair, to staff. Thank you, Zayed, for bringing this important topic forward. I noticed in the report that we talk about training for staff. I'm wondering if you're able to speak a little bit more about what that might look like, and also whether there's any need to include training for students as well, who are accessing the network on various devices.
Well, I can tell you some of the things that we have been doing for quite some time now. We've taken an ad hoc but regular approach to producing materials that we distribute to all staff, whether it's through emails, newsletters, through principal-vice-principal meetings. We've got, we encourage principals to put out posters that we produce on staff bulletin boards and staff rooms. Some of the topics range from, you know, recognizing email scams to, you know, making sure that you are not providing sensitive and personal or financial information on impulse, because you're being asked for it, to watch out for emails that look like they're coming from your supervisor, you know, check the email address to make sure it is them, or call them to find out. So that education has always happened. We're actually finding more people now contact the help desk, contact the help desk, and telling us, hey, this looks suspicious. And we're saying, thank you for bothering us with this, because before it was, I clicked the link, I didn't know, we shouldn't have, right? But the plans, the plans that we want to include in our cybersecurity plan for security awareness is a much, takes a much more formalized approach. You know, it is, it is, you know, often compiled by a third party or at least something that we can borrow from third-party resources for how to most effectively tailor, you know, training and awareness through, you know, a structured lesson plan, targeted to the right user groups, and use the most effective ways, things like simulation tests to find out how people are, you know, establishing the baseline, to find out how people are responding to fake emails, you know, before training and then after training. So we, it's going to be a more formalized plan for staff, and we think that's going to pay dividends for sure. As far as students go, you know, students are getting the kind of digital literacy training and security is part of that, that they get from their teachers all the time. Anytime a new digital learning resource is promoted or offered by a teacher, part of their responsibility is to make sure that they are using it with, you know, thoughtful, thoughtful and safe approach. You know, there are packs, putting together all sorts of seminars and webinars for students, for parents, for for cybersecurity awareness and safe use of their digital technology, and not just for cybersecurity, but even for threats against bullying and harassment and recognizing the harms of social media and so on and so forth. It's it's all sort of part of the, you know, goal of making sure that people are, kids are being trained as digital literate citizens, citizens, right? So again, my opinion, I think everyone's opinion, education pays the highest dividends when it comes to this sort of thing. Hope that answers your question.
Very much so. Thank you, Zayed.
All right. Thank you so much. I see no other questions on this topic, so we'll move on to 8.2. Hammond Bay Elementary School Water Works Right-of-Way.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Zayed, and your team, if you could express appreciation. And could you also please deliver those gift cards I emailed you about before tomorrow? That would be, that would be great. So thank you, Chair. So this, the next two items essentially are, they're similar in nature. There's not a lot that we can do. They're required by the municipality with respect to the projects that are there. David Fenner is here this evening from Facilities Department. David, if you want to come on, I don't know if everyone has met you yet, so great opportunity for that. You'll have to speak to get to the, to the front of the line here, though, I think.
Hi, Chair. Thanks for having me on.
Welcome.
Great. So we think that the memos and the bylaws are relatively self-explanatory, so the recommended motions is there for 8.2, subject to questions.
All right. Is there someone willing to read that wordy motion? Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I got it in front of me here, so. Yeah, move that the Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Nanimal Lady Smith, pass all three readings of the bylaw cited as Hammond Bay Elementary School Water Works Right-of-Way Bylaw 2024 in one meeting, and that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Nanimal Lady Smith, adopt the Hammond Bay Elementary School Water Works Right-of-Ways Bylaw 2024, being a bylaw that provides the City of Nanimal with right-of-ways associated with access to a water meter at the Hammond Bay Elementary School site pursuant to Section 65, Subsection 5 of the School Act, RSBC 1996 C412.
Thanks, Mark. Can I get a second or? Hey, Tim, thank you. Any discussion, or is there anyone opposed to this motion? If you could type that in the chat, that would be great. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 8.3, Pleasant Valley School Water Works Right-of-Way.
Thank you, Chair. So similarly, this is just a normal course of business requirement with respect to works at Pleasant Valley, and here to answer any questions, if there are any.
All right, I see no questions. Is there someone willing to move the motion? Chantel?
Oh, I saw Tim's hand up first. He gets this one.
All right, go ahead, Tim.
Okay. I'm getting me looking that way, so I apologize, so, because my laptop's over here. So the Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Nanimal Lady Smith, pass all three readings of the bylaw cited as Pleasant Valley Elementary School Water Works Right-of-Ways Bylaw 2024 in one meeting, and that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, Nanimal Lady Smith, adopt the Pleasant Valley Elementary School Water Works Right-of-Ways Bylaw 2024, being a bylaw that provides the City of Nanimal with right-of-ways associated with access to water, sewage, and drainage works at the Pleasant Valley Elementary School site pursuant to Section 65.5 of the School Act, RCBC 1996 C412.
Okay, and a second or? Greg, thank you. Is there anyone opposed to the motion as read? If you could type that in the chat. If you could type that in the chat. All right, motion carries. Well, David, you got off easy.
Thank you, David. Have a good, have a good evening.
All right, moving on to eight point four, uh, Gabriola School Field.
Thank you, Chair. And so on twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the, uh, agenda is a report, uh, in response to the board motion of September twenty-fifth with a respect to, uh, the, uh, status of, of Gabriola Field. Uh, Mr. Bakewell from Facilities is here to answer any questions. Uh, what we thought would be, would be valuable though, in addition, just to generally the, the field, uh, context and, and status is the strategy in order to maintain the, the field in a positive working order. Uh, and the thinking behind the reason, uh, that we do limit, because we want to be very clear, we do limit the amount of rentals on that particular field. And we do, uh, anticipate a closure over a certain period of the winter months that limits, uh, access to the field. And we want to acknowledge that it's certainly, um, you know, the community would wish for greater access. Uh, we think that we have struck a reasonable balance with respect to access, uh, versus, uh, you know, versus the maintenance of the field for school purposes. Uh, and we, you know, we're, we're very much open, I think, uh, as a district and certainly the board's facilities plan foresees increased levels of partnership were available. And if, if that becomes available with our RDN, et cetera, we, we'd be happy to, to look there, but we just don't see, um, we don't see a, really changing the strategy with respect to the midfield maintenance at this time. Um, so again, I, I don't know, Kelsey, if you want to add any further comments, or we can just respond to any questions that, that are there?
Okay, uh, does anyone have any questions regarding this information that was provided to us? Uh, Mark?
Thanks, Leanne. I guess through you to staff, um, what would it take to make the field more usable throughout the year without having to restrict usage? Not asking for, yeah.
Mr. Bakewell, is, I could ask Kelsey to jump on if, um, if you have a, if you have any background on that answer?
Yeah, sorry, my, uh, my big debut here and I've got a cold. Um, I, uh, so the, the big part of it is, uh, so in the winter months, similar to, uh, to City of Nenaimo Fields, we, we basically have to shut it down. Uh, because we don't have the growing season, like we, we don't have the sun helping us, helping the field repair. So there's really not much we can do to, to help at that time throughout the rest of the year. It becomes, it, it turns into a manpower issue, I guess, in a sense. Um, we've got thirty-plus play fields that we have to maintain and we've got a grounds department of X. And so it's, it's actually, we don't have the time to, to, to spend on the, on regular ma, or we spend regular maintenance time on our fields, but we don't have excess time to do the above and beyond things on all of our fields every year. We basically target a few, a few heavy hitters each year and that's what we, that's what we aim for. So if we were to, I guess, long story short, we would need more manpower specifically for the Gabriola Field, um, in those growing months in order to, uh, to allow more access.
Okay, thank, thanks, Kelsey. Thank you. Yeah. But that helps out a lot, their decisions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tim, you have a question?
Um, yeah, just a quick question. Um, uh, I was part of, um, Chief and Council for Staminus and we, we built a, um, during my, during my last term, we built a turf field for our nation. And we got a lot of the, we, we did receive a lot of, um, some of the costs, um, was forgivable. Some of the stuff was, um, just given to the community. Um, you know, the, the under, I can't remember the name of it or whatever. Stock pad was given to us as well, um, just to try to keep the costs down, but also to, um, but also that plan of, uh, reconciliation, all these kind of different things, right? But, um, I know Gabriola being a really small community, maybe there's, there could be, you know, the same company that we worked with, uh, that built our turf field out of Vancouver. Um, I got a good relationship with them. Um, it could be something, I don't know if that's ever been considered for the turf out, or the field out there where, you know, maybe there's some partnership that happens around, around that, because I do feel for a small community. Um, and alls we're trying to do is get exercise and, you know, and they're, um, obviously not able to do what they want to do out there because of the field situation, but if they're able to put a all-weather field in, like a turf field with limited maintenance, maybe that's an idea, just to, just to throw that out there. Probably, they've probably looked into this, but anyways, but I do have connections around keeping costs down when it comes to turf fields, so it could be something to look at. Thanks, Mark.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, uh, through your chair. Thank you, trustee Harris. So w- we as a district have typically, um, partnered with regional or municipal governments with respect to kind of, in, infrastructure at our sites such as the turf field. So we have two examples in the city of Nenaimo. I think, and we have multiple examples where we work together with Parks and Rec, uh, with the RDN as an example. And so that, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it off the table. I wouldn't, um, suggest at this time that we as a district would be actively pursuing, you know, the installation and maintenance of a turf, turf field, particularly elementary school, like, uh, be, because, you know, our own use frankly, you know, we need to maintain it for our own use, but it's not, you know, used, if we, if we installed it at Gabriola as just for the school, I don't think we would get the same kind of bang for our investment and ma, and maintenance as we do at ND or Barsby or i- if it was another secondary school, but what, what, what we would commit to certainly doing is we're happy to sit down with the, the soccer association to, to, to think of some ideas. Our preference, of course, is partnerships with, with, you know, regional districts or that, in this case, the regional district, and we will have a meeting with them soon to talk about potential options. Again, acknowledging though, or, or being straightforward, that that doesn't solve the soccer association's immediate concerns.
Thanks. Did you have a follow-up, Tim? Okay, uh, Chantel?
Thank you. Um, through you, Chair, I'm wondering, um, I have a few questions, so I'm going to try to pick which one I, I think is, is the, the biggest right now. Um, and that is the rentals have implemented, uh, rentals have implemented in agreement with partners to reflect the strategy above. Uh, what partners would that be? Do we, uh?
Kelsey, I believe it is just the soccer association, but we just put partners in the, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, and a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead, Chantel.
And I, like, I, I think that this is something that, um, we need to kind of maybe, not, not this specifically here, but, um, what you say about, uh, maintenance staff. Um, there being, um, you know, so many maintenance staff to do so many things, um, you know, looking at perhaps, um, increasing that perhaps, uh, the, the level of our maintenance staff if that's needed. Um, I think that's something that we, um, it sounds like it might be beneficial for a lot of communities. Um, Gabriola, um, being one of them, and I do see that you do, that they have hired somebody local to do some work on a regular basis, um, as well, the local staff member to maintain the lawn mowing over the summer months. So that's good to hear, but I wonder if there's something more that we can do when it comes to staffing, um, in a general sense. So maybe a budget time, that's something that, that, that could be looked at. And, and so not really a question, more of a comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Chantel. Uh, Naomi?
Uh, yeah, my question actually was, um, it was, Chantel, uh, in her comment, um, was what would exactly would it take? How many, um, what increase of manpower would we need to be able to, um, help, uh, the Gabriola community, um, maintain the field so that it can be used year round on a regular basis?
Sure, through you, Chair. Perhaps I'm going to, I'll start and then Kelsey can answer the specific. So what, what I'm just going to generally respond with respect to budget is our maintenance department did certainly go through some, uh, upheaval through cuts a number of years ago. And, and if the board did have additional funding, I would suggest that our first priority would not actually be necessarily increasing the usability for, uh, user groups on Gabriola as an example. We have uh, serious maintenance deficits in a variety of our sites that we, you know, the board has been investing in in a heavy way in the last couple of years. We've got, um, some dangerous trees that we need to find funding to be able to take down. And so, so I just, I want to put that into context that if the board came and said, you know, we want to do proactive maintenance and we want to put a hundred thousand dollars into proactive maintenance, I would suggest that facilities would not come back and have this particular project, or maybe necessarily even the fields as their top, top five heavy, heavy hitter. So I just want to put that into context, but perhaps, Kelsey, if you want to, uh, answer the specific.
Yeah, I can touch on that. Um, so it's, I, I guess it relates to how much activity is going to be used on the field. There, there's a direct, um, you know, the more activity, the more work needs to be done. But it's also important to note that even if we were to say, you know, full seven, seven-day-a-week activity throughout the spring, summer and early fall months, there is going to come to a point where the field needs time to regenerate. So, uh, no matter how much, you know, how much staff we throw at it, it just needs time. So it, it's, it's kind of a tricky question to answer. Um, and, and as Mark mentioned, there's other fields in the district that also need other attention as well. So it, it, it would be a, it would be a, that's a difficult question to answer.
Thank you though. I appreciate that. Um, I think, uh, just a follow-up comment, um, that maybe, um, the, the soccer association has, maybe they need to reach out to another organization, partner group, whatever, that could maybe help with the funding, you know, help us so we work together, um, to do it, um, to keep it maintained. Um, thank you. Appreciate it.
And could, could I just add something, Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I also want the board though to be, to know that, you know, staff is aware of the district's commitment to supporting community access to our schools generally. Uh, and so, you know, following this meeting, we, we fully intend to have a further conversation with, with the soccer association, talk about some, some ideas, keeping in, in mind those, the limitation, but we are very open-minded and, you know, the board is committed to ensuring that there's kind of jurisdictional equity with respect to where we make our investments and we do have that in mind as we plan and we, and we maintain as well.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, Tanya?
Thank you through the chair. So I think you've answered one of my questions. Uh, but I'll just confirm in between our meeting when the, the soccer association presented and tonight, have, were they, have you met with the soccer association in that period? Of time? And has, has anybody in facilities met with them to talk to them further about this, or is this all purely uh, information from our, our?
And, and this is,
Chip it on my words here.
Just staff responding to the motion that was, uh,
This is just staff responding.
We have not met with, Kelsey, I don't believe you've met with them. No.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, maybe I have to go back on the list. I guess my comment would be, I guess, in, in asking staff when they meet with, uh, with, uh, the soccer association is to note that in this particular case, it does feel more of an equity concern to me because if, for example, and I'm picking names out of a hat, well, if, if a school in the Harwood area wanted to use one of our school playing fields and we said, you know, you can't use it in these months because of XYZ, there is a city field they could access. There doesn't appear to be one, uh, another option for playing, uh, soccer in Gabriel, if I understood the presentation from the soccer association correctly. So that to me means we're essentially saying, we as a school district are putting these kids in a situation if we shut down the field from December to March, that they can't play basically. And I'm just concerned about that.
So through you, Chair, what I would say is that staff did not research alternative options for the, the soccer association. So we can't speak to the availability necessarily of alternative spaces. Fundamentally, it comes down to paragraph three of page twenty-nine is that September, after repeated overuse, the field is already showing signs of wear and tear. Like that is fundamentally what we've got it.
Fundamentally, that's the issue. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, uh, Tom?
Thank you, Chair. Um, through you to whoever can take this idea, I guess, is my, more my thing. Uh, question about, I'm connecting some of the answers that I've heard so far. I'm going back to Tim's idea that the nation managed to build a turf field. I'm thinking about Naomi's idea that they should be, the community should be looking for a partnership. And shouldn't this be, and then Mark also mentioned that the turf fields that we have managed to erect have been through municipal or regional partnerships. And this may be the suggestion that I have for the Gabriola Association is that they begin to go through the RDN, which they're a member of, and, and see whether there's a long-term partnership solution to, um, to this problem. And yes, Jillian, I know my camera's not on. The good people of Nenaimo don't need to see me while I'm suffering from COVID, but thank you. Um, I'll just, uh, leave that, uh, I'll just leave that idea out there because I think there is an equity issue as, as trustee Buzovic just mentioned, um, that there isn't any other place to go. And I think the only long-term solution for the community is going to be that. Uh, it may sound monumental at this point, but, you know, um, as a trustee, I would want to look at what a partnership between the three of us could do if there was any potential with the other partners. So thank you very much.
And through you, Chair, thank you, trustee Rokoby. And, 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 and we are going to proactively reach out to, to RDN as well, because you know, these conversations do take, uh, they, they do take time, but they take one conversation at a time. And they are such good partners in all areas that the RDN, uh, is represented and we work very well with Parks and Rec. So we, we will, that conversation will, will occur whether, uh, in the, the next time we meet, frankly.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, through you, Chair, I think pretty much my comments have been made, but maybe what I'll, maybe what I'll ask through you to staff, uh, just to confirm my understanding, um, you know, it's, obviously we, we encourage and support community partnerships for use of our facilities and want to encourage youth sports and, you know, active lifestyles and whatnot. Uh, the challenge here though is not that we're not, you know, doing our best to support youth sports, it's that our field has a use capacity and we're up against that capacity, you know, um, threshold. And no matter how much maintenance we do, um, we're not going to meet the demand for, you know, for the use of that facility, especially in, um, Southern British Columbia where the grass doesn't grow from November through to, I don't know, Kelsey, March maybe, February, you know, somewhere in there. So I think what I've heard from Kelsey and staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's not really what this is about is we, we have to close the field because if we, if kids are overusing the space during those months when the grass doesn't grow, the investment that we've put into the field will not repair itself and we're going to end up with significant damage to our facility. So I under, and I'm hoping I understand this, um, you know, perhaps there's room for, you know, higher intensity use during the growing season. And I think that's what I heard from Mr., from Mr. Bakewell, but, um, you know, it's one of those things where I think we need other partners to step in and to work with us to find better solutions.
Thank you, Greg. I don't think Greg has a follow-up. I think he had more of a comment.
Sorry, Chair, I should have, should have clarified that. Thank you.
And through, through your chair, I just wanted to add one more thing. And I'm sorry, we didn't, staff did not prepare, uh, like research other accessible fields, but I'm looking on the gabriola recreation dot org and I see that there is community soccer available at Rolo Field, upper rotate to lower as needed. So there's a, one example.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I see no further questions. So, uh, thank you, Kelsey, for answering our questions tonight. Uh, and we will move on to, uh, eight point five, uh, for, with an enrollment update.
Great. Thank you, Chair. And, uh, Kelsey, feel free to take the rest of the evening off. Uh, so, thank you, Chair. So every, every September 30 is or thereabouts, if it lies on a weekend, I, is, is our 1701 day. And so, well, sorry, it's never going to be September 30 again, but that's still technically the date because obviously we have a holiday. So the, the date, uh, following the media business day is the date that we need to have all, all of our claimed kids into the Ministry of Education. It's called the 1701 process. So the vast, vast majority of our funding is associated with kids, uh, enrollment that, uh, in, you know, regular program, uh, that, that drive funding. And then additionally, we have, uh, additional areas of funding and special programming, uh, as well as, uh, designations. What we do is on a year-to-year basis, back in January, we start the enrollment projection process. Then we base our budget, our preliminary budget in April off of those preliminary enrollments. Uh, and then we staff schools accordingly. Uh, and so in the event that we miss, we overstaff a school, we're in, um, pretty tough straits. So typically we are, uh, conservative in nature in our enrollment. We've been trying to be less so on a yearly, year in, year out basis. Uh, and so this year we are, I'm happy to say quite close. A number of districts around the province are feeling an outmigration, uh, to Alberta, as we understand. As an example, I believe Kelowna was in the news for having 363 less kids than they were projecting. So they're still growing, but their projection came in significantly below. And if you staff a school based or staff 363 additional kids, that is a lot of dollars that the system needs to find in September. So, uh, kudos, uh, to Tanya and team, uh, who do much of this work with respect to, uh, enrollment projection. Cause you will see on page 31 of the report, we are, um, only off, well, only normally we, we like to be up. Uh, but we're off 34, uh, kids in, uh, in the elementary, uh, programs. But we're still up, of course, from last September, 249 students. Uh, our secondary is bang on, and then we have an increase in our district programs. When you look at the district programs though, I want to be clear, it's difficult to make a prediction of what distributed learning is going to look like as an example, because this is headcount, the N F T E. So if you see 138 extra kids, that just means 138 students have signed up. Doesn't say that they're taking seven courses. Doesn't, uh, so, and they're likely dual enrolled. So we've already funded them in our secondaries. And now they might be taking a course, maybe two courses, uh, if that, if they're successfully able to complete their initial, um, requirements, uh, to get funded, uh, in, in the online plus area. So generally we're, uh, in pretty good shape based off of that. Secondary flat, elementary, a little bit lower. Overall, uh, we are up. Um, so that, that is a positive. When you then go to our designations is where you're going to see a significant um, increase in the number of designated students. Uh, and that's on page 33. Uh, you'll, you'll see they're significantly up from projection. Uh, so as a result of increased complexity, uh, as a result of increased perhaps catch-up. We, we still have some questions to answer about why the number is like it is. So are these kids that are, uh, being designated that we just, you know, we didn't have time la- last year? What, what does that, what does that look like? And we also want to be clear that increased designations lead directly to increased supports for those students. So occasionally there's a bit of a delay in the sense that, uh, you know, we need to see these numbers because if we missed, uh, we'd have to find the money to be able to support the supports that we put in place. The board, as you will recall, supported increased investments already for, um, uh, students of diverse needs. Uh, and those have flowed and the additional, um, resources are, will flow and are flowing as we speak to su- support those kids. Uh, so we're just finalizing, uh, where we are, uh, from a budget perspective, based off of all of the ins and outs. Uh, so an example is we still might at school X that's missed their projection by 15, still have a teacher that we've maybe staffed, uh, and so, so there's money that we would have to support. We have to look at various programming. So French immersion as an example, how is that doing? So we've staffed these schools, uh, what is their class sizes looking like to see if, you know, their nets, you know, drawing, jarring from the pot of dollars that, that we have versus kind of giving back to the, the, the bigger pot. And then the final step that we're doing right now is we are, or we've put in our, our classroom enhancement fund ask. And so you'll recall the classroom enhancement fund is a, uh, funding envelope. It's getting larger and larger and larger every year. And what it does is it says in 2016, um, so when the, the 1991, 92 and 9098, uh, collective agreement language came back into our collective agreements, what the, the ministry says, hey, look, staff a school today before the language came back and then staff a school tomorrow as if the language is back and tell us the difference in very rough estimation. And then how many teachers does that drive? And so, uh, our work is exemplary and I want to really acknowledge, uh, Tanya and Jackie Poulon for what they're doing together to ensure that, uh, that we're, we're meeting requirements and as well as our union partners at the N D T A for their, you know, their, their positive oversight of, of that process as well. And I want to just, um, highlight one area and Chantel, I'm going to beat you to the punch. You're going to have to ask about the actual impact in the education meeting in the future. But one of the things that our district, um, is facing is we have the situation where we're, uh, budding up against capacity. But we're budding up against capacity because we didn't anticipate the number of like kids with diverse needs. And so we're fine from a class size perspective, but because we theoretically could create a second classroom, um, that's what our requirement would be. But in this day and age of building permits and delays and et cetera, the chance of getting a portable on time, like if, if you told me, Mark, get me a new portable for, uh, Chase River tomorrow, I'm not going to have it in place until next September. There's a reality to that. And so what we did last year in a couple of circumstances at Fair, Fairview is a great example. We saw, oh wow, both the, the population of the school is far bigger than we thought it was going to be. We missed. But also the designations are far larger than we thought they would be. What we did was, is we put in co-teachers and these co-teachers were funded by this classroom enhancement fund. This year, we are going to be having, I believe it's 11, and Joe might correct me on here. But that's huge. So we're going to have 11 schools with additional, uh, co-teachers to support the needs in those schools funded from the classroom enhancement fund. And believe me, we talked to the ministry uh, before we, we went that far, but that's a huge influx of support. That's in addition to additional classes created due to complexity. So you probably had a parent come up to you and went, you can't be serious. You're reorganizing two weeks into the school year. Uh, what's going on? Well, it's because our complexity required it and our size required it. We did that bit of inconvenience, but another teacher, smaller class sizes, more supports. So very positive, uh, uh, on that particular front. We are very much looking forward to what the impacts of, of that looks like. So overall, again, we continue to be in a good financial position. Uh, we will, you know, of course be bringing the amended annual budget, which brings to light just the sheer increase in the FTE of our, of our populations to support, uh, individuals. We're having some discussions, you know, um, about the idea of what additional supports are available without creating additional, you know, absent, uh, failure fails as an example on, on our EA, EA side particularly. Uh, so with that, I'm going to, um, raise one last issue, uh, that I just think that the board needs to be aware of is one area that we're already seeing and watching and trying to figure out is our replacement cost. So our absenteeism. Some of it is related, uh, to, uh, to just increase in, we had very large increases in salaries for our teachers and our QP last year. Uh, but we've also seen an increase in FTE. So that's some of it, but also the Employment Standards Act changes that have kind of expanded, uh, you know, access to, to, to sick leave. So, but that's still an enormous, some of the largest increases in our, our replacement costs. Uh, well, the, the largest increase ever occurred this year and way above what we were projecting. So we're, we're watching that, um, quite in depthly. And so just so the board is aware and you'll see, you'll see that in quarterly. So I don't, uh, Tanya, did you have anything to add before we open it up for questions?
I would just through the chair, um, say that it was 10 schools. One of the schools actually has two co-teachers, just to make sure that it wasn't 11 schools, um, just 10 schools, but Fairview has two co-teachers. Other than that, no. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. I see that Joe has a comment.
Hi folks. Um, first and foremost, I, I really want to deeply appreciate all the staff um, who have been so collaborative in working through the process of adding, uh, looking at, at class size and composition and making best efforts to meet the language. I'm, I'm so appreciative of, of the communication and, uh, we don't always agree, but I do appreciate, um, I appreciate being kept in the loop and being part of the process. Um, that being said, I'm hopeful that, and I'm grateful that we have the co-teachers, but I'm hopeful that in future we'll have facilities to have those additional classrooms rather than the co-teachers because co-teachers are wonderful. But, um, having those students in, uh, inappropriate sized classes is our, of course, our preference. But again, very much appreciative of the work. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Tanya, you have a question?
Thank you. I technically probably have a couple, but one of them is probably pretty educational. I'll hold on to it. Uh, Mark, when you were talking about the, oh shoot, absenteeism, let me machine pick it up. Um, can we tease out how much of it is to do with the, tease out how much of it is from the, uh, the new legislation?
So at this point, we'd only be speculating. And so it's go, it's going to take some, some staff, um, time and effort to, to determine kind of what are the contributing factors to, to, to it. So not, not only did we budget way more for it last year, we also missed last year. So, so it's, e- even if we were bang on, it's gone up significantly. And so we, we, it's going to take a bit of, a bit of time. And I know that, um, you know, Tony and I certainly have been focusing on this recently and, and Pete and I have been, uh, discussing and I'm sure there's going to be some more steps from staff because we're going to have a quarterly that's going to show you how we're doing. And I would expect that the board's eyes will be on that number. So we don't know yet. But it's, it's on, it's, it's on our radar.
Okay. I did have a second question, but it's completely a different topic. So I'll see if anybody else has questions.
There isn't at this moment, Tanya. So you go, you go ahead. Thanks.
When I was reading through all the programming, like reading through all the numbers, I got a little confused. And maybe you answered my question. And I just didn't understand because I know I get confused by some of these number stuff. Um, when you were talking about, uh, I, Island Connect Ed, do we actually know how much from a percentage, how, how over they are compared to last year? Can we, can we not, is that connected to what you were saying about the FTE? And I'm just wondering about staffing there really.
So we're, we're 22.22 FTE, um, uh, i- increased from our estimates. And then on page 31, we have just the headcount from, so September 23, we had, oh, they're, they're, they're separated between DL, K to nine, 10 to 12. Um, so I, I can't tell you exactly the, the increase there. What we do though is we do monitor because a lot of kids, um, typically don't continue necessarily on um, with, with it. So we need to see, so we will continue to monitor whether additional supports are going to be required. Difficult to know.
Yeah, that was my question was additional staffing and supports. Yeah. Thank you. That was, all right. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
All right, Chantel.
Well, Tanya kind of stole my thunder here on this one, uh, because I was going to ask about ICE again. And I think my question is more actually about the satellite classrooms that are, um, within some of the high schools for ICE. Um, I, I'm wondering about the class size, uh, class sizes of those, uh, students who are going to those classes. Um, and if, um, we are looking at, uh, perhaps more, um, staffing for those uh, specific things. Cause when we think about ICE, we think about, um, and I didn't know this until I was, uh, in the family of schools, but they actually have satellite um, classrooms, um, throughout some of our high schools. So I'm wondering, um, is that going to factor into it? And I realize it's fluctuation high up and down, but when it becomes a huge fluctuation, um, is there a mechanism that staffing gets, um, allocated to that? And at what point does it get allocated?
Sure. So, so through your chair, I unfortunately cannot speak to the, the impact of the, the satellite issue. I'm going to have to take that away. Um, so with respect though to the, the overall staffing, we, we monitor. And then, cause, cause the, the fundamental factor is, you know, the, the caseloads are going to be looking bigger today than they're going to be looking in two months potentially, because we do have a lot of kids that do not necessarily, uh, continue on. So we are monitoring the needs and, and Mr. Balcom is, or Assistant Superintendent Balcom is in can, in continuous contact with the program. So it's, it's not an automatic uh, provision of staffing necessarily. So, so it's just being monitored in that regard.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, I see no other questions. So we will move on to, uh, eight point six, the annual vandalism report.
Great. Thank you, Chair. And if I could just ask, uh, Mr. Taylor to come on and say hello just for a moment. Got to speak for a moment to get the red, uh, sign around you there, Justin.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have a, uh, camera at this moment.
Oh, well, okay. So I was going to introduce Justin Taylor, our new assistant director of planning and operations, who's taking over for, um, Brian Hackwood, who retired uh, at the end of, at the end of the year. And so at the end of the school year. So uh, welcome, uh, Justin. Pete is rep, is representing Pete today. Uh, so to, today, uh, on the, on the agenda, you'll see the vandalism report with, uh, report by Paul Kingsbury, who's the needs, leads this aspect of, of operations in the facilities department. And a couple of good news items here. Um, so you will see there seems to be a direct correlation. Um, and again, I will accept that correlation causation are not the same, um, but the, the expansion with, through working with the RCMP on hotspots for vandalism of adding cameras to the external facilities of, of our schools has clearly, well, has arguably had an impact. So you'll see despite the fact that it costs more to fix things, despite the fact, um, that's you know, inflation and, and, and people power is expensive, we are down year over year in inflation and compare it to, you know, seven years ago, we're less than a third of our, of our, uh, our vandalism costs. So very positive in that regard. Um, one thing to note, we have changed our work order system in the, the district. Uh, and so what, which is allows us to track the expenses just a little bit clearer. So this number might go up in future years despite not having as much vandalism. So right now, uh, you saw Mr. Bakewell on, maybe one of his team goes out to help with, with, uh, a matter and, and just doesn't charge it to the right general ledger. So we can't track where that expense is associated with. We're in a much better position to like target, pinpoint those expenses. So they might actually go, uh, up a little bit. But kudos, um, to the, the team. I know Mr. Kingsbury is very happy with the, the kind of, uh, footprints response or, uh, external responder in addition to, uh, our in, internal folks. So happy to answer the questions that we can answer, uh, but, uh, generally some good news.
Thank you, Mark. Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Through you to Mark, I guess. Great to see these numbers coming down and great work to operations for doing such detailed tracking. Really appreciate that, you know, this was a concern. What, this report's been coming out for six or seven years now, I understand, 2018? Is that when we started doing this?
I'm not sure. It used to be monthly and then we changed it to annually. So, but I, I would imagine in response to a $150,000 bill, the board wanted to see it a lot. So.
Yeah. Okay. So I guess, you know, my question is, to be quite honest, after doing it for six or seven years and seeing these numbers coming down and knowing that we have such a good handle on the operational sides for tracking it, is there a value to staff for this report coming to the board?
So through your chair, appreciate the question. And we, like I said, we've already moved it from monthly to yearly. So it's, it's probably valuable as a tracking mechanism. And, and I, I say that because it's not a great deal of work to, to create the report. So I do appreciate the, the, the thinking there. I guess the value in it, and I will certainly talk to our facilities staff before I, I maybe make this answer in stone. But the value is, is when we do say get a surplus and we realize, well, you know, a camera system of $50,000 at school X would be a really smart investment. And here's why, because we dropped it, you know, because it'll impact vandalism by X. It's probably a good idea for the board to, to get, to get there. And, and if we didn't kind of have it in our calendars to provide, we probably would never provide it. So I don't think I would recommend changing gears at this point, but do appreciate the question.
No, and I appreciate the answer and your candid insight. Thank you, Mark.
Chantel.
Hi, thank you. I, you know, I, I was wondering the same thing, Tom. You know, is it, is it worth it? Is it not worth it? And I, you know, I realized too, Mark, now that you said that too, that it is kind of good to know. Especially when, you know, we have, we still have a lot going on. That's $65,000 this past year. And I'm wondering, does that include, so the vandalism does not include the cost that of the sort of like school upgrades, correct?
Through your chair, no, it does not include the capital expenses related to the camera systems or their maintenance. No.
Okay, great. And, and I'm wondering, and I might not be able to answer this. And, and I'm wondering though, how much is school requests to have these things done? And how much is more kind of a proactive approach from facilities? Like, okay, we've identified this, we kind of need, this needs to go on our top priority. Does it, I'm wondering how that process works? Like, is it just school driven or is it also facilities driven as well?
Through your chair, can I just confirm, you mean the installation of cameras?
Yeah, like say installation of cameras, exactly.
Yeah. So it's almost predominantly it was driven by the facilities department with the input of the RCMP. So they, and we can see that they, they gave some wise tips to, you know, for Brecken as an example, and, and a couple of others. We do have requests at the secondary, particularly for internal cameras, which does have a little bit of vandalism impact, but it's also, feedback has been that that's something that the schools are very interested in beyond just the vandalism aspect.
For security, that's, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I, I'm just kind of curious, it's more of a follow-up question regards to the cameras. Is that okay?
Go ahead, Chantel.
Is there, like, do we have a priority list? Is there anything that, I'm sure there is, but I'm just wondering if schools are told like, hey, by the way, you're on the priority list. We want to set up a camera on your school or something like that.
Sure. Through you, I'm just going to see if Justin might have that at his hands. And if not, I'll probably have to, to come back. What I can say is an example is I know Barsby from an internal perspective is the, the kind of main requester at this point. So like if we had funding to support an internal expansion, Barsby would be number one. I just don't know where the funding levels are, are at, at this particular point. Justin, do you know where we have the next external installation? I think we caught all of the kind of high profile ones at, at, that the RCMP suggested. I know that Rock City has been facing, there's just so many exit points from Rock City. So Rock City is an example of where we've been facing some increased challenges is an example. So Justin, I don't know if you have that handy though?
Uh, no, I think what you mentioned is, is correct that we've tackled most of the high traffic and high vandalism areas. I don't have the list. I could always provide it at a later date. But I think you're right, Mark. Most of the schools with the most need have been had cameras installed.
And through your chair, perhaps if it's, if it's okay, given that it's not a huge priority, what I can do is just change the report and we can add the, the priority list in the future so the trustees can see it. So Justin, if I could get you to take a note and talk to Paul, that would be great.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm actually kind of more wondering, does the schools know where they are on the priority list? Are they, are they given a list or anything like that, that they know, okay, we're, we're here on this list kind of thing?
So I, what I can speak to is that facilities has this year been focusing on communication with schools, not just on this issue, but on accessibility issues, on capital improvements, both major and minor, on communicating where they are at in a status perspective. So the answer is, I bet you they would say no, but soon we're working on it so that they're going to say yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for all your work in making our schools safer and less vandalized. It's not great coming to a school when there's things written, things broken. It's not a, doesn't, is it really good for anybody's mental health or for feeling safe? So I appreciate all the hard work you've done so far. Thank you.
All right. I see no further questions. So we will move on to 8.7 NDSS and LIS advocacy plan.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and good evening, everyone. I would like to share with you this evening, some thinking around an advocacy plan for the replacement of Nanaimo District Secondary School and the new build of Lady Smith Intermediate School. As we all know, there's a general election scheduled for October 19th. And following that, there will be this period of time prior to MLAs and the new government being sworn in, which is anticipated to happen late November, early December. And during that period of time, the incumbent MLAs don't have official duties, which I would say is a perfect time to engage them in an advocacy effort around these two facilities. So my suggestion and my thinking is that we're going to need a multi-pronged approach. And it's important that politicians speak to politicians. So the board is speaking to the incumbent MLAs. But I would argue that we need to gather more voices. And to that end, I've spoken with the NDTA and QP and shared this notion with them. And they are more than happy and willing to work alongside us to gather the voices of QP members and NDTA members. I've also spoke with the school administrators of both of the schools around this idea of this advocacy plan. And they too are willing to work with us to pull together the voices of school, of students, of administrators, et cetera. And finally, I think we can also be speaking with the district parent advisory council and the individual parent advisory councils of the schools affected, the feeder schools, and gather those voices as well. So I believe that if we are able to schedule meetings with the incumbent MLAs, invite them to a meeting over at NDSS and be able to provide them with the rationale, our request and the collective voices of people and who are affected by this, that we might actually be more effective in our messaging. That's the big idea. I'm going to ask Secretary Walsh to step in here and just give us an update on the status of Lady Smith Intermediate School and kind of where we are in that process and what more needs to occur there. And then I'm going to ask Jillian Robinson, our Executive Director of Communications, Privacy and Community Engagement, to also come on and speak a little bit more around media and collecting the voices that I, that I presented to you. So over to you, Secretary Walsh, first of all.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Langstrat. So where we're at with respect to LIS is that we have our PDR, our Project Development Report, almost, almost complete. Unfortunately, our architect and the ministry are adding a section on GHG reduction that has delayed its final submission. We thought we were there, but we just have this one last detail to, to get in. That's going to go in any day now. In reality though, given governments changing, whether it's the same party or not, government's still changing. The, the delay in the approval is sitting exactly right there. We've put our best foot forward with respect to building a new build at, excuse me, Davis Road. In addition, not to only seismic, in addition to capacity, in addition to an educational alignment with the K to seven model that we have, in addition to our community being behind it. The mayor and council had the Minister of Education there on, on that as, as well. Accessibility, there's a variety of things. And so our best foot forward is there. But unfortunately, that PDR just did not get in quite in time to, to meet the pre-election opportunity for approval. And so approval or denial is coming very quickly after, after that election is, is done. So.
Thank you very much, Mark. And Jillian, I'm wondering if you would like to pop on for a moment, please, and just share some of the thinking that you have and some of the discussions that we've had.
Absolutely. Thanks, Pete. Trying to producing and moving things around here. Amplifying these voices and our messaging is, is key. And I think we have a really keen opportunity here to, to reach out to our local media and share our goals and, and really not from just the DAC office and trustees. These are district and our community's goals as well. And I think through an effective advocacy plan, we can do this in a really strong and authentic way and help us achieve what we really need to do here.
Thank you, Jillian. And thank you, Chair. I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thanks. I see we have a question. Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Pete, for bringing forward this NDSS advocacy initiative. I see you found the board's songbook and you're learning the song. That's great. So we all sing it together. I think the timing of this is perfect. Hypothetically speaking, there may be a party that has promised to replace the tower if they're elected. And hypothetically speaking, if that were to come to fruition, which is a long way from anything during a campaign. But I think you would find that there's energy in the, in the city at large to join into a new advocacy. And there would be a lot to learn from the, the community leaders that, that worked so long and hard to, to bring that up to the provincial dialogue point that it's at. So kudos for bringing along the initiative. I think the timing is absolutely spot on. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rokabe.
All right. I don't see, oh, sorry, pardon me, Greg, I see you have a comment. I'm just going to read Chantel's piece that she feels that the plan gives her more hope and confidence than she had already. So she appreciates the effort that's been put forward in the plan. Greg, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to sort of acknowledge and how sort of pleased I am with this direction. You know, the, very appreciative of all the support we've been receiving for the, from the ministry with respect to the various upgrades that the ministry has funded in recent years to, you know, increase capacity, seismic improvements, childcare, foreign and after school care. And this seems like the, you know, next logical projects, specifically, you know, just to help get over that little hump along the way that we're trying to come to sort of navigate our way over to make the difference between, you know, a rebuild at LAS versus a brand new school. And of course, the board's number one ask for many, many years, replacement of NDSS is so important to our community. And I'm so pleased that we're starting this process and I look forward to what the next steps are going to look like. So thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone. And I look forward to going down this journey with you.
Well, you muted yourself.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for those comments. And the team here will be providing you with more information, dates, et cetera, as we progress with this plan. I wanted to share the general concept with you this evening to get some feedback from you. And we will be from this point forward progressing with this plan and we will keep you apprised. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks so much. I'm just going to comment just before we wrap this topic up that I'm very excited to hear and see student input in this. I think students have proven to us time and time again that their voice matters. And they are never unwilling to be brutally honest. And I think that that's something that some adults maybe need to hear in regards to this project. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having their input. So thank you so much. Moving on, we're going to go to 8.8, policy framework.
Thank you, Chair. And so what, the next two items are directly related. So if the first one is not passed, the second one will need a little bit of tweaking. So they're both related to the policy committee. So you'll see, back in December 2023, the board approved the general idea of reviewing the policy framework of, of the district. And that work has proceeded apace with the policy committee with the assistance of a temporary legal student who assisted the Secretary Treasurer's Office for four months during, at one point, in addition with consultation with district learning services and impacted departments as well. And so what we've come up with is a framework that does four things. And I'm sorry that I'm kind of repeating what's already been written, but it might be valuable if people didn't get the chance to get to page 50. So aligning the policy book with the administrative procedure book. And so what we mean by that is if, if you right now go to our policy book, it's got four sections. And then our administrative procedure book has seven sections. So policies driven by the board administrative procedure is driven by staff. But it's, it's odd that you, you don't have an administrative procedure somewhere kind of nest, like nested within policy. So sure, the superintendent has the authority to make administrative decisions and make administrative policies or procedures. But they, the, the idea would be is both for clarity and for delegation, we'd be able to see them together in the policy book. Then in order to achieve that though, we'd have to ensure that we have sufficient number of policy areas. So way back in 2012, what happened was is the board's massive, massive policy book was taken and the governance kind of philosophy of the district was changed just a little bit. Policies were created and then everything else was moved off into administrative procedure. So many of those administrative procedures frankly, continue to read like their policies because the language wasn't changed, just what they're called has changed. But what's also happened is we, if we're going to align different areas of procedure with policy, different areas of procedure with policy, we're gonna need to have some new policies. And so an example is personnel practices, school operations, fees is, is another example. Trying to address redundancy and contradictory policies and administrative procedures as well, although that will be the work of, of staff over the time, assuming that this is approved. But examples we give is it's really important that if we're going to have a policy book, that we know it. And that we don't need to look to three different places to make a determination. And so when we brought this idea to the board for the first time last year, we gave the example like, if you look, there's about five different places where you can see what is expected of the superintendent and their authority or, or not authority. And it's not, it's not intuitive for a board or even a superintendent as an example to be able to understand. So why don't we do our best to merge them all into, to one place? And so not rewriting necessarily, updating, but certainly merging. And then finally, the schemes, the scope and sequence of the work. So if we, this is a massive undertaking, right? So it, it's going to, the idea would be is that we would try to work through section by section by section by section, both updating the policies and then of course staff at the same time ensuring that administrative procedures are up to date. Or alternatively, there's still a lot of redundancy out there in our APs. And we haven't tackled it with as much purpose in the last year because we just want to make sure that the policy framework setup is aligned. Then we can really lean into, into the work of, of cleaning it up. And then again, you'll look at plain, plain language. We've tried to incorporate that to give our community, you know, heads up on what they're looking for. In addition to that, we also want to make the policy book accessible and make it very clear. So dropdown menus, so we do the board as a policy on transportation. Great, I click on it. And if I want to see the administrative procedures on, associated with that, they're going to be right there, easily accessible. Also, we want it to be able to be searched on, on the internet in an effective way. So those are some of the more technical details. You will see the policy areas that we're suggesting and exam, examples of, of what we're talking about in the memo that I won't go over. But you'll see core values being the sec, section one. No administrative procedures. And thank you very much to some of the Learning Services team for suggesting these are the values that should be the filters which everything else flows through. And so why would they have procedures associated with it? It was a good suggestion. So you'll see what the, the kind of recommended are. And so some of them come currently from the ones, come, some of them come from the twos in the policy. Section two hundred, how we lead and make decisions. So that's essentially, if you look at like another district, it would say board governance. And so it, it shows the, what, where the function and structure of the board's coming from. Section three, so three hundred, how we plan to support schools and ensure alignment. And so you'll see a lot of those are kind of operational nature. Many of the, the world of the Secretary Treasurer as an example fall under those. Section four hundred, the people who work here. So again, you're an employee and you want to see a variety of personnel practices as an example that are there. Learners and their families, the fundamental thing that, that we do. And we certainly think that we have too many APs in that area. We're gonna focus on that. But again, you'll be able to go there. An example, personalization of learning opportunities is a policy that we think needs to, to be created. Safety and wellness, and then working with the organizations around us. We've given in our memo some examples of deletions of APs that will come. There'll be many more of those. But happy to answer any questions. And I know the Policy Committee team is here who have been working hard on this. But what we're hoping is, is to get direction to start. Actually, this is, I guess, as, you know, Pete, Pete is here and Pete would say, plan the work and then work the plan. And I think that this is the planning, the work. So there is a recommended motion. We've noted that we're not suggesting significant amount of consultation on the framework because we're not actually suggesting any specific changes to policy at this point. So we, we want to put that caveat out there. So there's, it's not intended to go around anyone. But once the framework is in place and we start looking at policies, at that point is when the consultation will start to, to get more in-depth.
All right, thanks Mark. Greg?
Yes, thank you Chair. Through you, just wanted to provide some additional comments as a member of the Policy Committee. So this, it's important to keep in mind that this was a collective effort of the Policy Committee, working closely with staff. We also had the benefit of working with a summer student to help with some of the research and whatnot. And really what this boils down to, you'll see two parts on the agenda tonight. The first item is sort of what the Policy Committee's recommendation is with respect to the structure of our policy book. And then if that is supported, then the next part is the work plan, which is the actual policy work that the committee is hoping to do this coming year. So the idea, I don't want to repeat what Mark said. I'll try to put it in my own words and just really simple sort of, when you boil it down, what we're trying to do is make our policies more accessible, easier to understand, clearly demonstrate that, you know, we have policies that are driving APs and they're connected. And overall, I think just ensuring that we have a higher functioning policy book that everyone in the organization, community, the board can use on a regular basis. So really, that's what it's all about. And the first part of the, the first item that we're talking about right now is, is really about trying to put the structure in place that will support success going forward in updating the policies in the work plan. So, so thank you very much.
Thanks Greg. I'll just do a quick comment as we wait for any other questions or comments that, you know, it's always great to remember that clear is kind. And I think this plan demonstrates that we're trying to get very clear on where we're going. And I really appreciate the user-friendly aspect that we're going towards because searching anything right now is a challenge. You have to be very dedicated and determined to find what you need to find. Tom, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I think determined is, is being generous. It's nearly impossible to find it under the old format, but yeah. I just want to start by thanking Mark and Alex and Elke and of course Chantel and Greg for everything that I've been able to learn from them all as we've worked on this project together. It's been really pretty cool to learn so much about our district from this perspective. You know, when you're looking at everything, when you're having conversations about everything, even if you're just sorting them and deciding, look at that, we got six things about student technology. You know, it's a real good learning experience. And it's also nice to, you know, we think of the work plan as being what do we want to do next? And sometimes it's important for organizations to stop and make sure that what they've already done makes sense and is user-friendly and has good interface with our, with our stakeholders. So great project and yeah, thank you very much for everyone's work on it.
Tim, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Just thinking back to my years on Chief and Council with our nation, knowing that some policies always need to be revisited as they get outdated and these types of things. So is there a policy on the policy? It's kind of weird question, but just around ensuring we're always revisiting as, as getting outdated. So just a, I guess, just a quick question on that one.
Mark, did you want to comment if Greg also has popped on saying he would like to comment?
I can. Okay, I can get us started and then if I miss anything, Mark can, can jump in. So through the chair to Tim. So we do have a policy on drafting policy that the board adopted a few years ago. But it's mostly focused on the process of creation of policy, not so much around, you know, how often we review our policies. You know, I think one of the things we're finding in this process is, at least from my perspective, is we have a lot of policies. And, you know, just because the policy might be dated, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be reviewed. But sometimes it does. So it's, I don't think it can, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all approach with respect to just how old a policy is. I think you gotta look at other factors as well.
And perhaps I can just add too is that unfortunately, many of our policies actually do have dates within the body of the policy for, with respect to review. And as part of this process, what we are going to do, this is just from the administrative side, is create some kind of bring-forward calendar that doesn't matter who comes and goes in these chairs. There's going to be a BF for, for the policies to say, hey, it's a reminder that we're expected to review policy four-two-one this, this year, what, what have you, because some of them have fallen behind with respect to, you know, semi-annually or however that works. So it's a good point and thank you for, for, for pointing that out and we will, that that will happen.
All right, I see no other comments. Is there someone willing to move the recommended motion? Go ahead, Tim.
Can you have page forty-six, that one?
Yes, correct. Oh no, sorry.
Next one above it?
The one above it, yeah, the one.
Okay, yeah, I can read that up. The Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number sixty-eight and Naimo Lady Smith approve the policy framework presented by the Policy Committee subject to board approval of individual policies.
All right, and that's seconded by Tom. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? Okay, seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to eight point eight, oh, sorry, eight point nine, Policy Committee Work Plan.
We're almost there. So, so again, now that the previous motion passed, what you'll see is the, the work plan of the Policy Committee for approval. And you'll see in number two, these are ones that were not completed. And we thought it was also important just to highlight, the Policy Committee often doesn't necessarily do the work if, if there's another group that's better suited or to be able to facilitate the Policy Committee's work. And so you'll see where their current, the, the various policies are, are sitting. So catchment and student enrollment is example, that's one before Policy Committee that is in progress. We hope to be done relatively soon to bring to the board, but is a holdover from last year. Otherwise, anything that was in the hands of Policy Committee itself actually got completed, a very productive year. But given the significance of the, what the board has just passed, we thought that adding too much would not be the best idea. And so we thought we would add, start the process of, of some of the, the ones that are priorities, levels of interest or alternatively, in the case of the Appeal Bylaw, to be, the board has directed review. So you'll see role in board and delegation, the idea of bringing all those superintendent policies together, personnel practices, board recognition, and the appeal by law. And so those will be added. And so we're looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eleven, but really five being driven by the Policy Committee with, with the remainder being driven by the departments that are referenced there. And so the board motion is attached.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions regarding the work plan that's been provided? If not, if someone would like to move the motion that's recommended? Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Oh, just a minute. Camera? I have the wrong, wrong one up. We're all waiting for the end here. I think this is at the very end. Okay. So I had it right in front of me. I apologize. The Business Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number sixty-eight and Naimo Lady Smith approve the Policy Committee Work Plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
All right, is there a seconder? All right, thank you, Tim. You know, discussion, is there anyone opposed to the motion as read? You could type it in the chat, please. Okay, seeing none, motion carries. Moving on, there is no correspondence referred from the regular board meeting, no unfinished business, no new business. No for information. There's no questions, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mark. Seconder. Tom? All right, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.